And we thank you, for all the people at CIR, we here, we're on this board, this mayor, the other heads of this city. We thank you for this, for our dedication. We ask you to guide us in making the decisions if we make them or not. Heavenly Father be with our safety forces, getting women in uniform, serving the country. We ask you for your guidance, and damn, and protection.
Five hundred and twenty-two with lives of the United States of America, and two Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the repeat of the essence for all.
You may see. Roll call.
Craig.
Here.
Heffley.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Martin. Cole.
Mr. President, is there anything I'd like to make a motion to excuse residents who are cold, or are...
A motion in a second. Motion in a second, all favor say aye. There are, they are in season. I need approval minutes of the May seventh, two thousand twelve meeting. Motion in section, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. election appointments, we have none. speciality committees, none. unfinished business. additions of communications, no. now we come to the visitor's section. any visitor not to speak, please rise. under the podium, say your name and address. tell us what you're here to talk about.
Jan Wilkin, forty-five, Mendel, water, and heat. first of all, I want to commend Mr. Haley for the fine letter. I appreciate very much for toll one night in getting this in, and our, our option. I'm sure that our residents have done the same, thought the same way. I mean, if you haven't seen it, it's very detailed, and it does keep you informed of what has happened, and I think that's very commendable by me, counsel and this. The second thing that I have is, I wanted to share with you, excuse me, a statement by Brian Davis, thirteen oh eight, Mer, Oak, Cork, and Heath. I did request to have the opportunity to share this with you. this was information that was taken by my secretary, by Mr. Davis, registered for the Thomas Jefferson Theater event. he mentioned how much the Davis Shay House meant to him and his wife. he is originally from New Mexico, and his wife is from Westerville. they met in New Mexico and moved back to Ohio. she began teaching at Olom Tangi, excuse me, but decided it was not for her, so she began teaching for Newark City Schools. Mr. Davis said that when they moved to Newark, they visited the Davis Shay House and fell in love with it instantly. he said that one of the main reasons they built their house in Heath was because of Davis Shay House and the culture that it brings to this community, and that it is hard to find communities with anything like a Davis Shay House in them. and his wife had a five-year-old daughter, and the children's events that Davis Shay House provides for area families are very important to them, and are much appreciated by the family. and I'm, in my saying, I hope that we continue those kinds of events that will attract people to our community. thank you.
Any other visitors?
Thank you, Goodwood, sixteen eleven, Heathrow. I just want to come up and say that I did really enjoy the, uh, office city council for those students. it was one of the best times I've had. I just wish I'd asked them if I could video people, because they would have had fun in class with that. I should have done. anyway, the other thing was, as, I was handing out the pop, got lots of thank yous, and I do have the mayor Johnson saying that too. they were saying thank you, and we said thank you for doing this. um, but one thing that they were, that I shared out is they might have something called water. They do go for Diet Pepsi, but water in Mountain Dew are their top topics, but anyway. um, it was a great time in, in Thornwood.
We'll take that to them next year.
Yeah, well, I thought maybe you could show them how to waddle in the water or something.
Yeah.
But it was a really good time, and we got encouraged and inspired them all the way, because they are our future, so I'm, I'm behind them. thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. finance and budget, Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Mr. President. the committee met this evening. we had two legislative requests. we've got agricultural tax reduction request from Roselle Lee's property. question is sixteen, uh, Thornwood Drive. The second item was a legislative request, coming out of Parks Department, authorizing the mayor to execute a management agreement within Davis, who the Arts Council for management of Davis Shay House. one of the proposals that was submitted in the grand portion. The other items we had, uh, Officer Alexander discussed, uh, the city impound surplus option for the June ninth. Officer Alexander, anything else? nothing to add.
Oh, that's fine. thank you.
Committee members. So, thank you.
Thank you. public services in the absence of Mr. Mar are on, Mr. Craig.
Public service will meet, uh, uh, May twenty-ninth, five thirty P M. Bill, comments?
No, I meant comments.
That's it?
Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. public safety, back on day fourteen, at five thirty P M. we began a fire. under April statistics, for two thousand and twelve, there were twenty-six fire runs with year-to-date of one hundred and thirty. under EMS, there were one hundred and forty-five runs with year-to-date of five hundred and eighty-three. under transports, there were eighty-three runs with total of three hundred and fifty-six. under legislative requests, there were none. the monthly expense report showed April wages at sixty-five thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cents. April overtime was fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. the year-to-date total for overtime was six-five thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and two cents. under equipment, met nine, as an air leak. uh, the ice maker needs replaced to station one. the cost to repair is about seven hundred dollars, so that they look at a replacement unit instead. other personnel, firefighter Gregory and firefighter Rob are currently off duty. under training, the CARE, CAR, is coming from DuPont, the week of June tenth. this is the community awareness and emergency response, CAR. and what it is, is a three-car unit, a trade unit. that truck was captured to allow firefighters, uh, to do trading, um, in the event of a rail emergency. under all business, the FEMA grant had run out of money, so will be re-employed for that again next year. there was, uh, the EMS software that we discussed is currently being ordered. they have ordered a total of two new touch boots, and the law tractor, right, that was replaced for station number two, it's a Husqvarna, and then presented, cost of life, three thousand dollars, just under three thousand. under new business, uh, the radars are being narrowened, and the tones are going to be changed. and station one P A system is being reworked. I guess it's a little antiquated, doesn't work too well. and they also sold the, the parking lots of those stations. from that, we moved on to police. under police, April statistics, calls for service were one thousand four hundred eighty-seven. one hundred fourteen of those were offense reports, twenty-eight were arrests, twenty-four were accidents, and one hundred nine were citations. overtime for the month at April was ten thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars, with year-to-date total of forty-three thousand nine hundred seven dollars. there were a total of thirty-three false alarms, thirty of them commercial, three residential. April revenue was five hundred ten dollars, with year-to-date total of twenty-eight hundred sixty-two dollars. chief also reported on some other items. Heathrow Village Apartments, uh, they're hiring a special duty officer to control the, uh, the area. this is natural heat police officer, so this is a, this is a real good thing, will help deter some of the, the problems that are happening down there. chief, uh, also said that they were receiving an award of five thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars, eighty-two cents, for funding the dare school program next year. uh, they're going to be participating in the pleasure of ticket, that begins on May the eighteenth. and they also received a new radar unit, anticipating last year's. they are currently interviewed, three channels with dispatch position. chief Shepard also provided us an in-depth report of the incident decree from the April twelfth, escape of the patients from the Heath nursing home. chief, councilman Craig had asked for nothing on the internet block, and she has met with two companies that provide install the buildings, and that will be, uh, providing some flotation. with that, we adjourned at six twenty-nine. chief Shepard, do you have anything to add? no, sir. chief Evans, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. um, just a clarification. Mr. Gregory, uh, Pete Gregory is still working and, and won't be off with his knee surgery until fall. Dave Love is working, currently been taking his father into chemo, chemotherapy, uh, treatments when needed. so, they're both still on the clock, but, uh, Gregory's surgery will be coming up later in the year. I'm just bringing that to your attention, sometimes.
Thank you, chief.
Very good. thank you.
So, sorry, that's, that, uh...
That's fine.
Anything else?
Nothing right now. thank you.
Thank you. thank you, Mr. President. thank you.
Streets and Greenwich, Mr. Heffley.
Thank you, Mr. President. uh, Streets and Greenwich committee met this evening at five thirty P M. with Bob Geller, Street Superintendent, giving his report. there were five items on the agenda. first item, the trees on Grandview Avenue. there are two trees that are dead and need to be taken down. uh, they were, are in the power lines, and, uh, we don't feel that we are able to do this, so we're getting estimates to take these trees down. uh, the second item, a legislative request for agricultural tax reduction for lead property at six fifty, Thornwood Drive, approximately thirty-five and a half acres. uh, this needs to be processed as quickly as possible, and the Union Township must agree on this. uh, we did this, uh, about a year ago on another property on Summit Street, the managed property. uh, the third item was, the salt was delivered three hundred eighty-eight tons. uh, total cost of, uh, of what, uh, seed was twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, uh, to pay for the eighty percent allotment that, uh, we had to, had to pay for. uh, that, last, last year, we asked for nine hundred and fifty tons. uh, next year, we're going to put in four, five hundred tons, which is what we already have on hand. uh, we generally use about, uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty tons. uh, the fourth item is, we're spraying for weeds in the city around traffic signs, guardrails, miscellaneous areas like that. fifth item is, burping along roads, uh, given this weather, it's still good. and, uh, then, under other items, uh, Second Street Bridge detour, newer gas that people in, uh, Willow Ridge and, uh, Forest Hills and that area out in there, using that building, to National Drive, get around Second Street Bridge outage. and also, second item under other is, the Summit Street is in very bad shape. uh, Bob has, uh, already received one bid on, uh, three-layered chip and seal of, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars, and he's getting other bids for asphalt and chip and seal. and at the same time, we want to replace the powder ball we were working on paving. uh, and still on our list for paving, uh, really high on the list, Willow Ridge and, uh, Green Valley Drive. with that, uh, committee adjourned at five thirty-seven P M. Bob, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing, thanks. That's all. thank you. community development, is that it, Mr. Henry?
Uh, community development, Summit Committee will meet at five thirty P M. on June the fourth. that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Parks Recreation and Davis Shay in the absence of Mrs. Goldwell, or Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. uh, Parks Recreation and Davis Shay, that tonight, late for the first, five thirty P M. there were, uh, high items, four items on the agenda. the first one was Mayor Johnson presented a legislative request, due to the great community Arts Council. this agreement would span a ten-year period and reduce the amount of tax dollars coming out of the general fund by a little over fifty percent. Nancy Spence, the volunteer from the Community Arts Council, stated that we, that she and the volunteers who paid up the, of the council support, the organs. the second item was, uh, the Gallapark, uh, Ballfields, and that was that showcase one, the landscape was, uh, was helping out, and there was some time being volunteered to get those ballfields ready. uh, the third item was, uh, the hole is being prepped, uh, for the June second opening. and the Olympic pool, diving pool, and that penalty pool are all ready to go. they're getting ready to pump the Nancy River, but they need to replace one of the pumps. Wednesday, the firemen are underwriting. and they did state that they want video cameras in the front gate and office for safety reasons. Ann Klipper has been hired as the new pool manager, which is also an international swimming pool foundation's operator certificate from Ohio State University, which she scored a hundred percent. uh, that score ranks in the top half percent of all course participants. Robert Wright will be, uh, the assistant manager. he also reported that currently keeping up with all the growing at the parks, and, uh, with that, we adjourned at six twenty-six P M. Mr. Geller, do you have anything to add?
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Plenary Commission, Mr. Craig.
Plenary Commission will meet, uh, this Thursday, twenty-fourth, seven P M.
Thank you. interventional ordinances, ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand and twelve, ordinance waiting for bidding procedure, authorizing incorporation of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven thousand, replacement fund, authorizing for repair. ingredients for the, uh, evidence, assistance, and, uh, incorporation, eighty percent, so the jet elevation system, the digest system, the water treatment.
Ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand and twelve, ordinance authorizing incorporation of one four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, replacement fund, current, services required to replace the water station, the ground consumer, according to codes.
Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. ordinance forty, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance forty, two thousand and twelve, ordinance authorizing incorporation of one thousand dollars for the, uh, improvement fund, to pay for repairs, to, uh, by track costs, part of the seventy-two debt.
Mr. President, Mr. Heffley, uh, I make a motion that we wait, read second reading of ordinance forty, two thousand and twelve. second. have a motion in a second. wait, roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Heffley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Mr. President, Mr. Heffley, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance forty, two thousand and twelve. second. have a motion in a second, and discussion.
Roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Heffley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Yes.
Ordinance forty, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. Okay. ordinance forty-one, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance forty-one, two thousand and twelve, ordinance certified through county board elections, a proposed amendment, charter of submission to electors, citizens, and people who have...
Ordinance forty-one, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. ordinance forty-two, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance forty-two, two thousand and twelve, ordinance certified through county board elections, a proposed amendment, charter of submission to the electors, and people who have...
Ordinance forty-two, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. ordinance forty-three, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance forty-three, two thousand and twelve, ordinance authorizing incorporation of one thousand, five hundred, two hundred, hundred, two hundred, the New York Council for the Davis Shay House, according to the proposal.
Ordinance forty-three, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. Okay, that's all the ordinance, on the first reading. we have the ordinance on the second. ordinance thirty-six, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance thirty-six, two thousand and twelve, ordinance authorizing incorporation of one thousand five hundred dollars to the general fund, generally restricted services, as part of acceptance of the T A D.
Mr. President. Mr. Craig.
We do adopt ordinance thirty-six, two thousand and twelve.
Second. we have a motion in a second. we have Mr. Henry. all in, uh, a discussion. Roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-six, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and twelve.
Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and twelve, the board is waiting, uh, to adjourn, authorizing for, uh, the last stamp of one, nineteen ninety-six, board F seven, uh, document, S N T, for, uh...
Mr. President.
Mr. Craig.
We do adopt ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and twelve.
Have a motion in a second, and discussion. Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and twelve, we have a second reading. Okay, that's all the ordinance, we'll second reading. resolutions on the first reading, there are none. resolution on the second reading, there are none. that brings us to reports of city officials. there you go.
President Kelly, uh, I want to thank the district attendants. uh, Mr. Wilma, I want to echo your comments, uh, regarding the quality of the eighth graders that I interacted with, uh, during the Youth and Government Day. um, councilmen Kelly and Heffley were, um, very involved in working with them on Thursday and Friday. I let them go into more detail if they wish to, but I found the, uh, thoroughly enjoyable experience, uh, working with them. great group of kids. um, as you all know, uh, we will not be here, uh, next Monday, uh, for, uh, council meeting meeting. uh, that is Memorial Day. however, um, I would encourage, uh, all of us, uh, at five thirty next Monday to attend the city's Memorial Day ceremony. uh, this year, it will be held, uh, at the airport, at the site of the F Four Phantom. uh, should, uh, it be a rainy day, we have the ability of going inside, uh, the hangar next to that complaint for the ceremony. um, we've got, um, American Legion, again, graciously helping us to, uh, to, to put that event on. and this year, we also have the members of Heath Band and Choir, uh, Heath High School Band and Choir, who will be attending and performing. it's great to have those kids, uh, involved in that event. so I would encourage, uh, all of you to, uh, to attend at five thirty, uh, Monday, next Monday, uh, out of the airport. finally, I just want to, uh, make sure that this body is aware. um, a week or two ago, I asked, uh, my assistant, Jen Walker, to make sure that on the city's website, on the council, uh, page, I asked her to add a, uh, section for ordinances, uh, or resolutions, uh, that are before council for consideration. so our goal is that, uh, once ordinances have been drawn up, uh, they'll be put up there on the website, uh, for anybody in the public who may be interested in reviewing, uh, the wording on ordinances or resolutions, um, prior to this body, uh, taking action on them. and then, once, uh, action has to take, we'll take them down, replace them with any new ones. but, uh, just want to make sure that this body is aware of the fact that, um, I've asked Jen to do that, and, uh, um, hopefully, that'll be something that could be of benefit to those who are interested. that's all I have to say, Mr. President. thank you.
Thank you. Officer Alexander.
I have no reports.
Thank you. David Morrison.
I don't have the report exactly, but I'd like to say that, uh, I'm sorry about having schedule conflict for Youth and Government Day, but I know the son is, uh, is in college at Ohio State, and he's, uh, the, uh, education major, and he was, he was observing that day, so his class went on a field trip. it turned out that it was, it was, uh, Youth and Government Day. coolest field trip he'd ever been on. so he wished he had that kind of thing to use. That's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you. uh, let's start with Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Mr. President. just welcome everyone here tonight. that's all. thanks.
Mr. Henry.
I do like to welcome everyone here tonight, and, uh, again, I commend Heffley and Kelly for the Youth and Government Day. that's from that, it's time, time, like, Becky, I think it's been just great, Mr. Henry.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Just, uh, thank you so much for coming.
Mr. Heffley.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, thanks to Mr. Henry for the compliment, and, uh, I'll tell you that, uh, without the help of all the, uh, department heads, mayor, everyone that works and helps us, it wouldn't, it wouldn't get, uh, better helped, uh, we couldn't do it without them. so we thank you a lot. uh, I also would like to take this opportunity to thank Jan Wilkin for her comments on the letter, uh, been, been passing out in the third ward. I also would like to take and thank this time and thank John Robb, the mayor, who helped me get the thing together, so that we can get it out, and, uh, you know, it's going out to other departments of the city, to other councilmen. uh, I just think that the, the exceptions we've had on that number have been good, people, it's really effective, and I give you, uh, thanks for that. and with that, uh, welcome Nick, Lynn Stacey, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Let's see, we'll start out with Chief Evans.
Yeah. How was your day? It's been good. Was he good, Ben? Chief Shepard, can you talk that?
Yes, I can. Hey, what's your... Well, yeah. Introduce to, uh, Lynn's favorite son. uh, I failed to mention at the last meeting that, uh, Sergeant Chad Hunt, uh, on May eighteenth, reached his fourteen years as a police officer with the city. and, uh, um, there are people that have it, yeah, so it's, it was chair of the day.
Anything else?
Do I talk this? If you would have said that, I could have bombed you.
Uh, let's go over to, uh, uh, let's see. Bob Geller, can you talk, talk fast?
No, I can't.
Anything, anything else to say?
No, I don't.
You have Geller?
No, Geller.
You should, yes.
I have a couple things. um, I do want to mention, I was talking with an engineer the other day from Burris and Michael, and, uh, he did attend to Thomas Jefferson, uh, took some friends with him, over there at the Shay House, and said he really had a good time in his work. so, I kind of wanted to mention that, I think. also wanted to thank Becky for helping out with Youth and Government. I know, during the time of trying to thank all of our sponsors and all the Lions Club members and everything, I leave a lot of people out, so Becky didn't mean to leave you out. uh, also, I, I get a lot of help from, uh, water plant guys for bringing tables and chairs in. we bring like, a hundred and fifty chairs in, and like, twenty-one tables, so that they can sit down. I have to kind of borrow them. some of the chairs come from the Methodist Churbs, some of them come from, uh, the rec center out here. so we gather those all up, they all help me load them, and they'll load them. uh, I appreciate all of their help, so, other than that, that's all I have.
I just want to say, uh, thank you to you and, uh, Lions Club and our older people you can help, because that makes our job real easy. we don't have to worry about that anymore. it's taken care of, and I know it's what we're taking care of, so I never have to worry about, you know, that part. that's great. and, uh, I think that, I want to thank them for helping out, and all the other council people are helping out. um...
I know the Lions Club enjoys doing it, and, uh, hopefully, they can continue to do it. I know Becky, maybe, they can get you hired in there.
Red jacket on you, yeah.
By chance, I've been asked.
They've been in very much need of any, any help. they are the oldest organization in Heath, and, uh, and they're starting to show. But, anyway, uh, we'll move on.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Two things about Youth and Government, of course, I worked out for a few years...
The thing about Youth and Government, of course, I worked up for a few years and every year, you know, how can we, just, little bit better, is that? And, uh, some people ask about, you know, whether we can have the action in the morning, after the evening. Right, in the evening. You know, do the stuff during the day, but have the kid, you know, so the kids come back, have a comeback evening. The only thing I'm afraid of that is that half of them won't show up because of other commitments and stuff. So really, maybe the idea is to get it, videotape or something, so that we can make a, a CD, DVD, uh, something so that the kids can show their parents, grandparents and stuff like that. This is probably the fewest number of parents and grandparents we've ever had. Usually there's quite a few. Now, no, the timing of the kids, you know, what they're doing and stuff. But that was probably the fewest audience members that weren't connected somehow to the city, you know, in the audience and stuff. Um, so that's something to think about tweaking for next year. Um, the other thing is, if we could ever get it with Mr. Hankins or something, would they actually do an ordinance on something that we actually want in the city? You know, so that they run through and do the groundwork ahead of time, that come up with a budget and come up with the, the figures and stuff. And then they may, if they pass it, then maybe we can introduce it here and actually do it so the kids can say, hey, that's why we do most of Youth and Government. You know, it may take a couple of years for things to leave it or, you know, a long term or something. At least maybe they can say that, you know, so that the future classes, we think of something, maybe they can. If it was just, you know, getting a art bench or a waste container, uh, or, uh, you know, something along the path or something, you know, they do an artist, they do it, then we do it and stuff. So just bring some, you know, good energy to it and stuff. Uh, and then the next thing I was thinking about here is our July second council meeting. We talked once before about whether we're going to move it up in time, where we're going to have it and all that stuff. So to say, I want to talk about moving it tonight and think about it so that our next.